My name is Leigh Tucker and I am the Chair of the Cleveland Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Thank you for joining us this evening for the Ward 10 Council Candidate Form. Candidate forms are offered by the League to provide the candidates a chance to introduce themselves and to give the citizens of the community an opportunity to ask questions of candidates so that they can learn more about the candidates and they can make an informed decision while voting. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and does not endorse or oppose any candidate or political party. Candidates are requested not to post photos of themselves with our logo nor anything that infles endorsement. We do however truly appreciate those candidates willingness to participate in this educational form. We thank the Cleveland Public Library for the use of the Lake Shore Auditorium and you, the audience, for participation. This evening's form is being livestreamed and will be posted online. Links to the video will be posted on the League of Women Voters Board at Cleveland website. Our moderator this evening is Janee Hambrick. Ms. Hambrick is a dedicated professional with over 12 years of experience at Key currently working, serving as the Team Lead. She holds a Master's Degree in Political Psychology and a Bachelor's Degree in Political Science, blending academic expertise with a passion for leadership and community impact. As the President of the Northeast Ohio Young Black Democrats and a proud preseason committee person for Ward 60 in Cleveland, Janee is deeply committed to civic engagement empowering young voices in the city. She is also a proud member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated where she holds the value of scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. Janee is known for her thoughtful facilitation and ability to create inclusive spaces for dialogue. Today she brings the same energy and commitment to moderating this candidate form, helping guide a meaningful conversation about leadership, representation, and the future of Cleveland. Come on up, Janee.
So, thank you for joining us today for the Ward 10 Council Candidate Form. I'm Janee Hambrick and I will be your moderator for today's form. Today's candidate for sitting council will be asked a series of questions to help the residents of Ward 10 to understand what the candidates would do if elected. Some questions have been submitted in advance by the residents and organizations of Ward 10. And the remainder of the questions will be submitted by the audience or via livestream. We ask the audience to avoid expressions of support or opposition to any candidate during the form. Please do not interfere with everyone being able to hear what is being said by each candidate. As a final reminder, this is a form, not a debate. Please direct all questions to the audience, not your fellow candidates. The candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. The candidates will have one minute to answer questions. The timer will, the time will be monitored and strictly enforced by our two timekeepers sitting in front. Please raise your hand. The timekeepers will hold up a card to give you a 30-second and a 15-second warning. When time is called, the timekeepers will hold up a bright red card to notify you that your time has expired. When time has been called, we let you finish your sentence, but we will also reserve the right to use the mute button if necessary. Please turn, turn off or mute all cell phones at this time. And with that, let the form begin. So first, we are going to have some mute from the SPOT, from the Youth Empowerment Organization where their mission is, where their mission is to empower youth from 14 to 25, helping them to develop a blueprint, self-sufficient, and to become a civic-minded citizen. So I invite those who have this time to ask their question. Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna go in alphabetical order in speaking time. Oh, I'm sorry, first we need to do your opening statements, I'm sorry y'all. Just give me one second, I'm sorry. So we'll do the opening statements. I'm just so excited to hear from our youth that I forgot all about our opening statements, so I apologize. So we're gonna go in alphabetical order and for opening statements, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Thank you to the Cleveland Public Library for opening your doors here for us tonight to share our thoughts and our concerns and our feelings and hear from you all as residents about our community. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for stepping up and hosting this forum for us tonight, as she indicated that this is not a debate. And so all of those who came looking for sparks to fly, this is not the place for you. This is to hear responses from both candidates about, you know, what we've done, how we've done it, and what we intend to do if we're elected for the next four years. So again, thank you all for your putting this together. Again, I'm Councilman Anthony Harrison, I represent the 10th Ward of Cleveland City Council. I've been here in this position for seven years now, coming up on eight years, serving two terms, before coming to Cleveland City Council, had an opportunity to serve on Cuyahoga County Council, representing the 10th District here in Cuyahoga County. We got to this point because of the Ward, the population changes in Cleveland, but we had to reduce City Council by two wards. And so unfortunately, that has pushed Wards 8 and Ward 10 together. But I don't see this not only as a change on the map, but as an opportunity for us to unite our community. You know, for far too long, we hear about the North, we hear about the South, we hear about, you know, the differences if you go over the bridge versus, you know, one side of the bridge. And I truly believe that this is our opportunity to come together, to unite that community under one shared purpose. One shared purpose, that the division no longer of the highway, the highway that divides us, the division that has created, no longer has to exist. And so I look forward to the opportunity to continue our dialogue that we've been having with many residents across the new Ward 10, with the hopes that they would choose me as a next representative to represent the new Ward 10 on Cleveland City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here as well. Thank the Cleveland Public Library for hosting us here at this wonderful facility, and I hope all of you are mindful of this because some discussion is gonna take place in the very near future as to what happens to this one building. The SPOT Youth, one of the organizations that I support over the years, again, the kids that are here, young people, thank you very much. To all that are gathered, this is a unique opportunity for all of us to hear from, both of us here at this forum. New Ward 10 is unique. It's gonna run from the lake all the way to South Euclid, Cleveland Heights, East Cleveland, Euclid, the whole northeast side of the city of Cleveland. So who's ever elected on November 4th and takes office January 1st, this has a great responsibility, has a unique responsibility, because this is a very important critical area. Tremendous opportunities and possibilities here. As a senior member of Cleveland City Council, I had the pleasure of representing Ward 11, Ward 26, Ward 11, Ward 8, and now hopefully come January 1st, new Ward 10. I encourage all of you to become engaged in our neighborhood organizations. I wish there'd be more people here. Because it is about citizenry. It's about engagement. Neighborhood, people make the neighbors. Show me a great street, I'll show you where people are concerned and working with one another. It's about our community. We need more people engaged, we need more of our civic clubs and our neighborhood organizations to be engaged more than ever before, because of all the possibilities and potential here. I'm running because I'm gonna continue the work that I've done in Cleveland City Council. I have a whole bunch of projects that I'm working on to reimagine this neighborhood. I've done that on 105th Waterloo, I'm planning to do that on Euclid Avenue and other sections of the committee. So I ask for your support, I humbly and respectfully ask for your support come November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now let's hear from our youth, so I'm gonna invite you guys up to ask your questions.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Kent, I am the Lead Ambassador for the SPOT Youth Empowerment Organization, and my first question is, how will you make sure young people's opinions are actually heard when the city is making important decisions?
We're just running out of the border. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just passing. Just gonna answer a question.
Okay, all right, thank you. Great question. You know, I do this at home, like I got two kids, yeah. And absolutely out of doubt, I think that as adults, right, and as leaders, we often believe that we have the right answer, right? What's best for you all the time. But I really do think at times, you know, it is valuable to ask your input, your thought about, you know, how you wanna see your future? What are the things that you need to be successful? And so I pride myself on making that a priority, just in the youth programs that we support in our neighborhoods, the funding that we support organizations that are youth-focused. Our engagement, you know, in the schools that we have, we engage every single one of our schools in our ward at high level. It's not just me coming in, taking a picture, or showing up when an event has happened, but it's actually having conversations, real conversations with young people about their community and how, as a leader, that I can be supportive and be helpful. You know, we've seen many cuts happening with our school time programs, after-school programs, but this council has stepped, you know, many occasions personally out of my pockets to help support programs, right? In addition to the funds that we get from, for our discretionary dollars to support our schools. And so through that all, the works and the things that we have provided and supported the school has all been because of our conversations with the young people, what they needed and what they believe I can do to support them.
Thank you for the question. You know, every project I've undertaken, whether it be the Calum and Rec Center, Mark Trauma Pool renovation, NEF which is under renovation right now, the program and the plans that are being put together for Humphrey Sports Complex, are all a result of hearing kids and young people in neighborhoods, and adults. So I'm on the board of Good Academy, I worked very closely from day one on the creation of Good Academy. I listened, my kids went through the school system, I went through the public school system here. It's very important for the young people that are here to be engaged in the process. I'm not afraid to listen. We all need to listen to what our kids have to say, what our young people have to say. The work that is being done presently right now in our community are all a result of listening to the young people, to the parents, and I'm gonna continue to do that, it's very important. I want our neighborhood to have the best recreational facilities possible. The Calum and Rec Center, I wouldn't visit it, all the other suburban rec centers prior to the construction, prior to design. I wanted a facility that was gonna attract people and serve kids and young people. Thank you very much.
Okay, my question is, will you make your own be councilman?
Okay, to be a councilman? Um, no one in my family's ever heard, ever held public office. I was, my mother was an activist in a neighborhood, in a Nottingham neighborhood. She was an activist at the Nottingham Civic Club, she supported Carl Stokes. I passed out literature for him when I was a young kid, and it was through her engagement and encouraging all of us in our family to get engaged. And then I went to work for White Rollers and I was involved in the UAW, United Auto Workers, through their cap camps. And that's where I got really involved in the political process, and it worked out real well. And here I am, all these years later, as a public official and the Dean of Cleveland City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. A great question. You know, we both had interviews earlier before we came here, the question came up. You know, my track was a little bit different. You know, my grandfather, who, he and my grandmother, who raised me, my mother was a single mother, down in the Glenville neighborhood, he was a steelworker. He worked for, he was a member of United Steelworkers of America. He worked at J&amp;L, J&amp;L and LTV Steel, which we know as the Steel Yard Shopping Plaza now, long before your time. And very active there, was a union representative, you know, he would take me with him on those trips, right, going up that hill, now that we all try to dodge and try to jump over to get down to the steel yard. Would take me with him, you know, my grandmother would fuss at him, "Jen, why do you have that boy down there in that steel yard? All that smoke and stuff." And so, those experiences, he would take me to the rallies, he would expose me and open my eyes to, you know, what was going on beyond what was on our streets on St. Clair. And, you know, during that time, those experiences really stuck with me. And as I, you know, got further into school and went to Collinwood, you know, became a member of student council, you know, started getting involved in our local elections. You know, the election that really, you know, sent me, I'm sorry, that really sent me there was when Raymond Perez ran for mayor. That campaign really inspired me and I felt like, you know, those experiences, you know, was something that I really wanted to do, and I wanted to have a life of public service and help my community. And so it was just my experiences that I gather, you know, through my time.
Hello, my name is DeShay. I am a part of the media team of the SPOT Youth Empowerment Organization, and my question is, what are some of the things you're gonna do to help get off, get the young people off the streets and like stop the crime rate with the young people?
Tough, tough question. What we need is more wraparound services in our schools. We need vocational technical programs back in our public school system, which has been stripped out of the east side schools. We need more parents. I was at a meeting last night at the Calum and Rec Center. Listen to those residents, listen to the parents that were there, what did they say? We need more parent engagement, more parent concern for our young people, for the kids and the issues that they have. We need more mental health assistance in our city. We got our, it's gotta be all hands on deck. I look at some of the police reports that I deal with and some of the issues that I'm saying to myself, we collectively as a community gotta come together to address the problems of juvenile violence and provide all the programming and the wraparound services that we need to have for our kids in this community. That's a given, that's my commitment.
Thank you. Another great question. You know, it's easy for elected officials to get up and talk about, you know, what should be done or what folks need to do and, you know, what we'll support, but I can tell you, as this elected official, I stand here before you today as somebody who's actually putting the work in with our young people, who is actually funding organizations, who is youth-focused, youth-driven. Not only are we just taking them to local places around town and exposing them to things outside of the streets, we're taking them on college tours, we're taking them to visit prisons, we're taking them to visit large-scale manufacturers, right? We're taking them to the State House, we're taking them many places, you know, as exposure to show them, you know, what else is there to support them. We have at our Five Point Community Center that I fund completely, 100%, the center's funded by me as councilman. We have created safe spaces for our young people upstairs on the third floor of our building, whether they have been able to create a podcast, where they had a place to lounge, a place to congregate with one another. And so, again, we are putting the work in, you know, with our young people and not just, you know, saying what needs to be done, we're actually making it happen.
Hello, my name's Aleah, I'm the head leader of the support leader team in SPOT. My question is, how would y'all improve the transportation for students, make it easier and cheaper for them to get to school, jobs, et cetera?
Well, I can tell you this, I'm committed, and we have been, we're trying to do everything we can to support our students and our community. We don't cutbacks in CMSD, that's a reality, cutbacks on the state level. All I know is every time that I've been asked to support funding for schools or any activity, I'm there, whether it be at the Calum and Rec Center or I just had to come up with the funds, gladly came up with the funds to replace fitness equipment, to replace the refrigerator in the kitchen. Anytime I've been asked to support programming and funding for kids, whether it be transportation, whatever it may be, I've been there. And I'm gonna commit, stay committed to that. At the end of the day, we have responsibilities, but also the entities that we are funding, CMSD, we're funding the City of Cleveland with taxes, we're funding the county, we need to be, all hands on deck, all of us gotta be working together to make it as best as we can. That's my ongoing commitment, that's what I've been doing. Thank you.
Well, again, as my colleague indicated, you know, committed to supporting the schools and the students every way possible. I can tell you, there's been times where teachers have wanted to take students on field trips, but has not been able to secure the transportation or has not been available funding, that my wife and I have come out of our pockets to sponsor a host of transportation vehicles to pick them up, to take them from and to field trips that they wanted to attend. So not only that we have provided our own personal support, I believe our advocacy as well, you know, with RTA, you know, ensuring that, you know, the free bus pass, you know, continues. I know most students can ride the RTA bus for free with their student ID, making sure that that does not go away with a lot of the cuts that we are anticipating to come. But really, using our voice, using our leverage as councilpeople to ensure that, yes, we do not directly have a oversight over the school district, but I can tell you, our voices matter, right? When we are engaged with a lot of these issues that are affecting our schools, and that's one that we can make sure that our voice is there and our voice is heard in ways to support the young people transportation.
Thank you, let's give it up for our next question. So we're going to alternate, so you'll go first the next time, and then you'll go first next time, we'll alternate like that. So we do have some questions from the audience, but we also have some questions for some local groups. So our first question will come from the Waterloo Arts Council. So their question is, will you support the planning department's effort to implement better pedestrian and bicycle infrastructures in Ward 10?
Of course, of course, of course, of course. My 15-year-old rides a bike, right? My 12-year-old thinks he's still trying to figure it out, right? So absolutely will be supportive of, you know, infrastructure enhancements. As Chairman of Development and Sustainability for Cleveland City Council, you know, we are a part of a lot of these conversations that are happening around the city. Just in council, we pass orders that looks at how Cleveland moves over the next five years. That is dedicated special pedestrian infrastructure that supports those who are using the roads. And we are committed to supporting better streets investments in our neighborhoods. You know, folks oftentimes will, they don't like bike lanes, they won't like to share the roads with those who are on bikes, you know, but it's important that we have safety for all road users in our community. And anything that's come before me, fully supportive. And the Waterloo Arts District, I know they're working on the SC, to do some enhancements and to do some things over that area of the ward, we fully support those efforts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Of course I support that, we've done it, we're finishing 140 Street with the bike lanes, with Lake Shore Boulevard, we could do more work within the area we're reimagining on Lake Shore Boulevard. Every one of us have a responsibility, and I'm gonna say this because we don't wanna fob on it, everyone's having responsibility in the way we drive and our day-in, day-out travels in the neighborhood. All I hear at all the neighborhood meetings is people want more traffic enforcement, they're afraid. Cyclists are afraid, my youngest son is a cyclist, and he's concerned when he's in Lake Shore Boulevard and the bike lanes, people going through the bike lanes. So I'm committed to that. As Chairman of Public Safety, I've heard the concern citywide, working with city planning, how we can implement more bike lanes, more safe routes. Again, I'm committed to the Waterloo Arts District and all the other issues that we're confronted with in the neighborhood, and I support them, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question. The new Ward 10 is classified as a food desert due to several factors, the distance of supermarkets, limited car availability, and low household income levels. What are your plans to increase access to stable, affordable, healthy food options? And councilman, you'll go first.
Thank you, that's a great concern for all of us, just not here but across the entire city. So I think it's gonna be tomorrow or the day after, there's been a long time to plan a cross here with the former Daves and the Ponderosa site. We're gonna enter into a major agreement with a major developer to put forth a plan for that site, to see if they can reimagine those two buildings. One of them might have to come down, that's the reality, but the other side of that equation is, if we're gonna attract businesses to our neighborhood, they have to make money, we have to support them. And so Dollar General closed, but they said they weren't making money. So at the end of the day, I'm very much aware of the food deserts, I'm committed, and stay tuned for the announcement that's gonna come out shortly on Daves and the Ponderosa site. My number one priority is to try to bring a food store back there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question.
I just wanna remind you guys to please hold your applause to the end, thank you.
Would you please speak up, we can't hear you.
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, I got a very loud voice, okay, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna ask that you all hold your applause to the end, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question, very good question. As I'm out campaigning, as I'm, you know, talking with residents, particularly over in the northern part of the ward, you know, that question always comes up. And so, in my mind, you know, the food industry, you know, the economy is difficult. We see grocery stores, we see people leaving neighborhoods and they're closing their doors because of high costs, you know, and some of, a lot of us, it's difficult. Before you go in a grocery store, you spend 20 bucks, you get a pack of chicken and a sack of potatoes and everything else you need, right? Now you go over 20 bucks, you may come out with a pack of chicken, that's a small pack of chicken, okay? And so, we have to get creative, right? We have, we have to get creative. And, you know, travel to places like Atlanta, look at the Calum County World Food Market. Go to places like Philly, where you see the Philly co-ops that exist in those communities, right? I've seen what we've done with Myers over at Fairfax and how, you know, we poured in tons of subsidies to make that happen. And my commitment is to whether the subsidy is to bring a store here, whether it is to work with organizations to create a food co-op here, or whether it is to bring a world market to our community, we're committed to do that.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question is gonna come from another organization, this one comes from vote 411. What is your plan to increase economic opportunities for residents, in particular, younger residents of your ward?
Thank you for the question. As Chair of DPS, I have the honor and privilege of working with administration to create what is going on as our $50 million sites readiness fund for good jobs. And during that time, you know, when the discussion came about, and this was something from council and the mayor wanted to do, how do we redevelop these large-scale industrial manufacturing sites that are in many neighborhoods across the city of Cleveland? And we rolled up our sleeves, we, as council representative and as chair, you know, we began to work with the mayor's office to develop the plan that we now have as a $50 million initiative, Sites Going for Good Jobs. And so, I truly believe the work that we're doing there, we're going to bring back a lot of these sites that have been laying vacant in the abandoned neighborhoods, that will bring all levels of jobs to our neighborhood, that will put everyone back to work in our community. The 1,000 acres is our goal to bring back here in the city of Cleveland.
Thank you.
Thank you. My record demonstrates that whether it be the tearing down right now of the abandoned National Acne Site, that $11 million project, the letters I wrote to General Electric about the plant, and the lobbying I did to get the plant down on 150 Second Street. If we don't clear out these abandoned factories and sites, nothing's ever gonna happen with them. I look at the former Longfellow Elementary School abandoned for years, now there's 80 senior citizens living there and people working at that site. We gotta be creative, we gotta be aggressive, we need partnership out of the county and out of the city departments. We can reimagine these neighborhoods if we have the help. We need help out of Columbus, I'm committed, my record has proven that. Every plant my grandparents and my family members worked at is closed, closed, and I remember that, and I'm reminded of that every day when I'm driving in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, just wanna remind you guys, we do have volunteers walking around with paper. So if you have questions, please write those questions down so that we could get them answered. So if you need one, just raise your hand, and we'll get you some paper over to ask your question. All right, so our next question is, what is the highest priority for the advancement of Ward 10? How would you accomplish progress towards this priority? Sorry, I can't read.
Well, I'll tell you, as I'm going around talking to people, walking, number one concern I hear, they need residents, they need help with housing repair. Just drive around, look at the roofs that need to be replaced, they need, they need their homes repaired, they need help. They need help with the abandoned, the vacant and abandoned properties on their street, the absentee landlords, the LLCs that are coming in. Our number one priority in the city with the new administration, with the administration of council from January 1st, should be focusing on quality of life issues, public safety, housing code, health code enforcement. We gotta get back to basics. If anyone thinks by doing the lakefront down in front of the former stadium, which could be a big home ground, is gonna do anything to benefit our neighborhood, you're badly mistaken. Won't happen, we gotta concentrate on what is basic and what is important to our citizens.
Thank you. Well, again, as I'm also, you know, traveling around the ward, you hear many different needs. The needs are different in every different part of our community. There's some common issues, there's some common needs, there's some common interests that folks have across the ward, but what I can tell you is that, you know, consistently, one first thing I hear is about safety. Residents not feeling safe in their homes, right? Being able to come home after dark. We hear issues about housing, right? We hear issues about jobs. And so what I can tell you, what we are doing currently, as Chairman of DPS, we're leading the $100 million Housing Investment Fund alone with the mayor's team to bring affordable housing back to our community. I mentioned the $50 million Jobs Fund that we're working to put people back to work. One of the things that I wanna do is expand our Violence Interrupters that's in our neighborhoods to be our eyes and ears. I also want to create a special co-responder patrol that will be funded out of Ward 10 funds, that'll be only for our community, that will proactively go out and patrol and be eyes and ears for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question is gonna come from Leigh. What will you do to help increase availability of affordable, integrated, safe, and accessible housing for people with disabilities?
All right, well, again, and I'll go back to this, so again, as Chair, it puts me in a lot of roles. It puts me in front of a lot of people across, not only just in our neighborhood, but across the city. the city. And so we'd be able, we were able to see what's happening in different parts of our community, and how we can take some of those things and bring them back to our neighborhood. And so, again, we mentioned, one of our latest initiatives that I lead on behalf of the council along with administration is our hundred million dollar housing investment fund. That fund is aimed to support neighborhoods like ours, right? Support those old brick buildings that we have storefronts and houses at the top, right? To support these smaller homes that line some of our streets. And what I can tell you is that our community will receive our fair share of support from this fund, you know, if I'm elected in November to continue the work that we are doing. I'm proud of that work that we've started. The council president, the mayor, worked together, you know, along with outside agencies such as Key, you know, to help make this happen. Then I stepped in to kind of continue the work to make sure that it actually is put forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're already doing it here with the Habitat for Humanity, the new houses on Grove Wood, Agent Place Homes that we did over with the Longfellow School Site, the eighty new units there. I'm committed to affordability. I'm looking at various sites in the community. We're working with Seth Tass from Burchard Hathaway, we're working with Habitat for Humanity, and looking at other sites right now. We've been doing it already here. I'm committed, we need affordability. We can't build four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar houses here, it won't work. We need to have homes that are accessible, and we're doing that right now in present Ward eight, and I'm going to expand it into new Ward 10. The proof is in the pudding, we're doing it already. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this question, because you're both already on council, what is your proudest accomplishment that served the community well?
It's being accessible and being a full-time councilman. And I think of the things that I've worked on over the years, sponsoring the First Fair Housing Order, sponsoring MBE, FBE, co-sponsoring that, working on all kinds of projects, development projects, and our community Collinwood Rec Center. I could go down the list because I've done a lot over the years. This very library, right here that we're in, helped to construct this years ago. So I could go down the list. I'm very proud of the engagement, but why not say this, what is important is the residents who work with me. I didn't do it alone, I did it with the residents. And all, each and every one of you have the ability to make a change and be a stakeholder in this community if you want to do that. Please become engaged, work with us come January first, whoever is in office, we're going to need your help. Thank you. God bless you too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I often get asked that question about, what is your single greatest achievement? What I can tell you is that, you know, it's hard to just single out one thing, but what I can say is that, you know, when I came in the door, there was a lot of work that had to be done, right? You drive down Euclid Avenue, you see the number of abandoned buildings that once lined Euclid Avenue. The prostitution that was crazy and out of control on Euclid Avenue between Island Hall and Green Road. It does not exist anymore.
Yeah, that's right.
The abandoned buildings that were once there does not exist anymore. The Cleveland Hotel that was a haven for drugs, crime infestation, killers, everything else does not exist anymore.
That's true.
When I came in Nottingham, abandoned buildings. Now it's home to a laundry mat, a coffee shop, and soon to be a restaurant. The old Cleveland Range Building that was closed and had been closed for a very long time, now is home to the Goodwill Outlet Center and Job Opportunity Center. Right, so we came in, we got the work, and our neighborhood is moving forward. And I hope in November, when I'm elected, that we'll continue the good things that we've been able to do and achieve in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so what resources or programs will you provide for homeowners to make repairs in Ward 10?
Right. So council as a whole, a number of years ago, we knew that we had an issue. We knew that the programs, the funding we're receiving from HUD is not enough, because they wanted you to be one foot in, one foot out before they will help you, right? And so we created what is called the age-friendly oriented program that supports residents at a higher income level. But what I can tell you is recently, we've launched a ten million dollar home initiative that supports Ward 10 and two other communities across Cleveland. And so within that, we are going to take those dollars, regardless of age, income, or whoever you are, and build new affordable homes, going to rehab vacant homes, and when we come to your neighborhood, we're also going to rehab homes that own the streets in the neighborhoods where we're doing the work at, right? So that way, if you need a roof, we got you. If you need paint, we got you. If your porch is collapsing, we got you. We're doing the work. So November, we need be back in the scene, so that work can continue. Thank you.
As a councilman, we're doing it already in city council. Problem we have, we have to put more money into it, but we need help. We need help out of the federal government, we need help out of the state government, possibly the county. I am committed to doing everything I can to increase the funds available for housing rehab. We're going into the budget, the budget process later this year, going into next year. You need to express yourselves to the administration, because I'm going to express myself, we need far more funds to assist our residents in rehabbing their homes. There's a hundred and forty thousand existing housing units in the city. We have to fix them. They're all over approaching a hundred years of age. So we have to come up with unique programs. We're doing it already in Ward, present Ward eight. Are we where we need to be? No, we're not, we're not where we need to be citywide, but we're doing it, and we're going to step it up, and that's my commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next question is also from the Waterloo Arts Council. Are you willing to allocate some of your discretionary funds to deep paving and traffic calming projects in Ward 10?
We're going to do whatever we're required to do, or we've requested to do. We're trying to do it. Assess right now, we're doing the speed tables, but as I've indicated in previous neighborhood meetings, every speed table is between eighty-five hundred dollars and fifteen thousand based on the width of the street. And that money comes out of our resurfacing funds, for street resurfacing. So I'm committed to putting in speed tables, I'm committed to doing whatever we have to do to traffic calm. We also want additional traffic enforcement in our neighborhood. That's a given. People, if they're speeding, they need to get a ticket in our neighborhood. I'm committed to that, pressing the safety director, I'm listening to you all, but we're doing the traffic calming right now in Ward eight, I can tell you that.
Short answer, yes. Absolutely. We do that now. And so whether it is small businesses, whether it is organizations, whether it is supporting home repair organizations, whether it is supporting two loan programs, whether it is providing funds for senior grants cuts, you know, we are using our discretionary dollars to support the community. We absolutely will support additional enhancements, not only to Waterloo but other high-traffic areas and pedestrian areas across our ward. Consistently over the years that I've served on Cleveland City Council, whenever we've had resurfacing, I went above the standard allocation that every councilperson has received to support more streets to be the safer improvements to happen on those streets. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that we are laser-focused on implementing some of the Vision Zero techniques that have been developed during that process.
Okay. Okay. So our next question is, what role will you, what role will you serve with the Greater Collinwood Development Corporation? Will you provide funds?
Yes, I've committed to that publicly, at their meetings, just my conversations through the community, yes. I'm not one to live in the past, right? Whatever happened in the past for the organization happened in the past. But what I can tell you is that the people who are seated there now, they are, they are laser-focused, they are rolling their sleeves up, and they're putting the work in to bring that organization back. And I fully commit and support that organization financially. I have done that, you know, there, I don't believe that there's a time where I threaten to pull my funding because of differences or just things that I may have not liked or what we didn't agree. So we absolutely are committed to supporting that organization financially now and moving forward into the future.
Thank you.
I've met with the board, I'm committed to funding the development corporation. I want to see a board that reflects the community, a board that is aggressive, that's going to focus on various sections. I fund right now an opportunity up on one hundred and eighty-fifth, a special person will work one hundred and fifty. We need the same thing on St. Clair, Euclid Avenue, and Waterloo. That's our development corporation. We need to have them focused on what is important, our small businesses, our neighborhood development. There's been a lot of problems in the past with that development corporation. We've gone through three of them, and now we're at a point, I'm looking for the light at the end of the tunnel. So I have made my commitment that we will fund, I will fund, that new development corporation, and I'm committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question is from...
There's a two-part, this is another part of that question on the diaphragm.
Oh. This fiscal year, have you funded this corporation in the past? If so, when did you last provide funds?
I cannot give you the specifics. It's when the city withdrew its funds, that's when my funds were withdrawn. So I can't give you the exact date, I'd have to look for that, but I'm committed again to funding it as we go forward at this point. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not exactly sure when the funding stopped, and the only reason that my funds did not continue for the organization is because the organization that I seek funding from me as councilperson. So when the city did discontinue their support of the organization, my commitment still remained with the organization as it does today.
Thank you. So our next question is, another question from vote four-one-one. What strategies would you support to increase civic and voter participation in historically underrepresented areas? Go to your first.
Give me that one more time.
What strategies would you support to increase civic and voter participation in historically underrepresented areas?
As you mentioned, the word engagement, right? Just really talking to the people, working with them, you know, encouraging them to get involved, right? Supporting them, whether it is financially, you know, to do programs or placemaking that they like to do in their neighborhood. You know, I know that participatory budgeting did not pass in Cleveland City Council, or not Cleveland City Council, but in Cleveland previously, but I can tell you that we are currently working with, or we're trying to get a program started with Neighborhood Connections, that will provide funding that I'll take and provide to them, so that way they can provide grants and other opportunities for residents to get engaged in their community with ideas that they have to support their neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, we have twenty-one existing groups in Ward eight right now, and I'm committed to continue to work with them. I help them, I do mailing for many of the groups and organizations, but my brothers and sisters on the primary election day, only nine percent of the people love it. That's nine out of a hundred people love it. I can't stress enough for participation. You look at a street, look at a neighborhood, people make the difference. We need more engagement in our neighborhood organizations. I want to say that again, we need more engagement in our neighborhood organizations. You can make a difference. I was president of Nottingham Civic Club for three consecutive terms. We made a difference. We had one of the strongest civic clubs, and I'm committed to starting the Nottingham Civic Club back up along with the Euclid Park Civic Club. We need neighborhoods, group groups, and strong neighborhood groups.
Thank you. All right, so our next question is, how are the locations for speed tables assigned? Are there plans to make the signs bigger so you don't damage your car? I've seen a mess of somebody's car.
Let me tell you, the city does a poor job of identifying the speed tables. Look at Akron, they're painted with dayglo paint, they have better signage. We've continued, all of us in council have urged the administration to come up with a better program. On some of the streets that they're going in now, it seems to be better identified, but there's no doubt we have to do a better job, the Traffic Engineering Department has to do a better job. But how are they assigned? It's based on traffic flow, it's based on the length of the street, it's based on how many people live there, if there's a school there. So those are all the factors that enter into. We're all bombarded with requests for speed tables. I think I have two dozen streets right now that have requested them, but they're only going to go in certain streets, and they don't go on streets that are over thirty-two miles an hour. So they're not going to put them on St. Clair, they're not going to put them on Lake Shore Boulevard, they're going to look at streets where, especially where kids and where schools are at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we heard, there's specific criteria that is involved when determining where speed tables are placed around the city. But city council also has the ability through our discretionary funds to support additional speed tables or traffic calming techniques across our neighborhoods. And so, we have currently in our ward, we have added additional dollars to our resurfacing budgets, you know, to place speed tables on various streets throughout our community. We are, we take the requests that we get in, we send those over to the City Planning Department, Traffic, Transportation, Mobility, a person is there, Sarah, who works for that department. And with the hopes that, you know, as we move forward along, we get into the February and our budget time starts, that city council can, you know, allocate more money to support the speed table request and other traffic calming requests, and the better street investments across our city as we get into that process. But we are, we are making those investments now, and we intend to continue to make those investments.
Thank you. So this next question comes from Lee. Why does Cleveland not currently have contracts with Uber and Lyft to provide wheelchair-accessible van options at a fixed rate like larger cities such as Chicago and New York? Can you assist with this?
I had no idea that those type of contracts or engagements exist, but I will tell you, I'm happy to look into it and happy to find ways that it makes sense for us, that we follow suit and support, you know, the need that we have, because that's a great idea. I never thought about, I never thought about that. A great idea, so happy to support it, happy to figure out ways that city council can be a part of making that happen.
You know, I just heard about that myself just recently. And again, I would urge you all, when you have unique ideas and thoughts, and you come across other programs or initiatives in other cities, communicate that to us. Because I think some people think we're aware of everything that's going on in the world or in the country. We're not. We can always learn, all of us in city council can learn. So when you have unique ideas such as that and others, communicate. I'm looking at stuff right now in the division, for the division of police that have been sent to me by individuals who have visited other cities, that we're looking at some unique programs and initiatives. Never be afraid to contact any of us, and never be afraid to express your thoughts or opinions. You never know, you might bring a new idea to the city that we can implement that will benefit all of us. Thank you.
Okay, so our next question is, how do you allocate repair funds, and who gets the funding first? And if you have a disability, I've been a resident of Ward eight for over ten years and have yet to receive assistance.
I'd have to ask first of all, what program you've applied for, if you're elderly, if you're handicapped, there are programs through the city, through the economic, excuse me, through the redevelopment department, we have the Senior Repair Home Program, which again is not adequately funded, we have to put more funding in that. So that's something we're talking about in council. But I would say to that individual, you need to let us know, because I create a paper trail, and I direct it to the various departments and divisions, who can explain to me why this program, why you're not being assisted, or why you're not getting the help. Again, sometimes there's guidelines, income levels, age levels, handicap, elderly, et cetera. So again, I have to know specifically about your specific case, where I can hopefully be able to help you. Thank you.
Excuse me. I've asked for assistance for the last three years, and I've spoken with your office council and paid the guards to...
We'll give you his contact information, we do have a type online, I'm sorry.
For what repairs? And I was for housing repairs. And I've reached out for the last three years to get assistance from his office, and have yet to receive anything. And I didn't reach the age qualification, but disability and some other things came along with it and still got no assistance.
So we'll make sure that you get his contact information.
I'm already happy, I'm going by heart now. I've called us off for the last three years.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure to get connected at the end.
So I do little things a little bit different, all right? So, yes, we have programs that are, again, as I said earlier, that are funded by the feds. that are funded by the feds. SHAC, there's Gutter, there's Street, there's other programs that we did that are funded by HUD that has strict guidelines at times, whether it's your age, whether it's your income, or any other factors that they set down and the city has to abide by. City Council before tried to respond and create an age-friendly in place program. But we know that only went so far. And so when our harper dollars came, you know, I seized the moment to again, acquire $10 million that support our ward and two other neighborhoods so we can support residents like this gentleman who needs the support, who needs the help regardless of income, regardless of age, regardless of household size, because it's tough out here. It's tough. It ain't easy out here in 2025, right? I mean, we see everything that's going on around us. And I can tell you for sure that people are, people need help. People are struggling, not because they want to, right? It's just because of circumstances. Thank you.
So our next question is, what are your plans to redevelop our lakefront? And what is your idea of what it could look like?
All right, thank you. So as we know, that the administration, the mayor and his team are the lead on a lot of the work that we are seeing across the city. That is their role. They are there to administer and run the day-to-day operation of the city, which includes the part of the question that we received. City Council has been very engaged in assisting the administration, part of the administration to see that, you know, we have a more viable, have a more accessible and walkable lakefront. One of the things that we've worked with administration to create is the North Coast Waterfront Development Corporation. I, as chairman, I serve on the North Coast Waterfront Community Authority. And that authority works with the corporation to find ways to generate revenue to put back into our lakefront. We worked with administration and developers to create the shorter quarter, short tip. Again, as chairman, we were part of those discussions to help make that happen. And as chairman, we want to bring some of the ideas and thoughts that we are seeing across other parts of our city, including downtown, right here to our neighborhood.
Thank you.
We're doing it already with the Memorial Home Park going into Metro Parks on September 4th with the expansion of the Lakefront Connector from the Euclid Beach Pier, a quarter mile to the west. We'll have 150 acre park very shortly. Then we're going to redo around the arch. It's going to be the Euclid Beach Arch Park. Then working with the library right here as a showcase of this property. So we are imagining Lake Shore Boulevard. We're imagining the lakefront. And ladies and gentlemen, hopefully the neighborhood meetings will be held at the Council of Rec Center. I will encourage all of you to participate. We are reimagining the lake. And we're going to have a lakefront park second to none here in this neighborhood. Again, I want to thank all the groups and organizations that have worked on this thing over the years. I have sponsored a lot of the legislation. It's happening, it's in the pipeline, and it will become a reality. So again, thank you to the community for the support.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question is, casino and other discretionary funds have proven simple for council members to award, but difficult for small projects like the school. Or, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, that's what it's, yes, to draw down. Since both of you have committed support to the school over the years, can you promise to work with our nonprofits and administration to make good on those pledges before you leave office?
We all, I think the whole of us try our best as a showcase of discretionary funds and how we can form groups. But we have to go through a legal process and a lot of folks don't realize that. And a lot of the funds are reimbursable. So the neighborhood group or the organization has to spend the money upfront. There's the challenge. The groups don't have the money. So we've been talking internally. Can we set aside, let's say like $10,000 that a group would be able to spend and provide their receipts to us and then we could reimburse them after the fact? These are all the issues. We're governed by federal and state regulations. And we're trying to do our best to get above that because we know there's a lot of worthwhile organizations that need to be funded. But we're restricted in how we do that. And I think every member of the council is doing their best to figure out how to make this work.
Thank you. Absolutely, every member of City Council, I can't tell you one that is not trying to find ways to support local organizations or support programs that exist in our neighborhoods. That is why myself and a couple of the councilmen got together. We started pulling apart the casino protocols. And which resulted in now a change in how we are allocating casino revenues, the processing, and you know, what does entail, you know, to get those dollars out on the streets. We know that if organizations come in to ask for $5,000 or $10,000, right, to do the work they're trying to do, we know they don't have the $5,000 or $10,000 to put out and wait six months to get it back. It just don't make sense, right? And so I'm happy to say that, you know, through the work that myself and other colleagues have come together with council staff and created new protocols on how we can get the money out the door. Now, we still have our challenges, working through the law department. And I believe and I'm confident that as we continue to move along through this process, that we will find ways to get the money out the door to school. You know, I responded to those emails to say I'm supportive of you and trying to find ways to get your money back to you that we've allocated.
Thank you. Okay, so our next question comes from vote 4011. What are your top priorities for supporting safe, quality housing and preventing displacement?
Safe, quality housing?
Yes.
And prevented displacement. So as I said, you know, we have a new initiative that we're leading in the city of Cleveland that is our $100 million housing investment. And so not only are we looking to support neighborhoods like Collinwood, but we also are looking to create affordable and accessible housing, right? Because we see a lot of developments happening in different parts of our city. You know, and we hear from the folks who are applying there, they just can't afford it. We hear other people who are moving from some of these neighborhoods that once lived there, that unfortunately with the skyrocketing housing prices has forced them out of their neighborhoods. And so we believe and we're hopeful, we know that this fund will help bring back neighborhoods like Collinwood as relates to our housing stock. That's why, as chairman, we supported the gap financing for the homes that are being built on Row Wood now. That's why we supported housing that we have coming to our waterfront down in St. Clair Superior. It's going to provide 219 affordable units right on the lake. And so we believe that work is going to yield the results that folks are looking at safe and affordable housing in our community.
We're doing it already, but there's also the other side of this equation. We have to have a more aggressive policy with the absentee landlords, the LLCs that are coming into our neighborhood and buying up all the two-family homes in us. That's become a real problem, as I talk to residents and I experience it. The city's Department of Building and Housing has to become far more aggressive. The law department has to be far more aggressive. To see the kind of things that we're dealing with is unacceptable in our neighborhoods. If not, our residents are being pushed out. If they're coming in, they're buying these properties, paying cash, jacking up the rent and forcing our residents out. We've got to draw the line in the sand. So we need all hands on deck in dealing with the LLCs coming into our community. I think we're trying to do that right now within the council.
Thank you. What is the plan for Collinwood High School? Will it close? If so, will it become a partner for me?
Well, as a railroader, you know, my position is about Collinwood High School. I'm not happy with CMSD. They stripped the vocational technical programs out of the school years ago. We asked repeatedly for them. We've been in the neighborhood meetings. They won't fix the pool, they won't fix the gymnasium. I would expect them to attempt to close the school sometime, maybe next year or the year after. We, as a community, we've got to be together, we've got to be united. Because again, what's happening to the east side of our city? They keep closing our schools. And our folks keep moving out. And our kids are denied opportunities. I see it in Good Academy. He needs more services, he needs more programs. So my brothers and sisters, get ready, because it's just not Collinwood High School. We're hearing between 20 and 30 schools are going to be recommended for closing. And I'm hearing a good number of those are going to be on the east side, including possibly some new schools. So again, I think the proof is in the pudding here. We've got to step up, we need more engagement. I'm prepared to do what I have to do. I'm going to go to the wall at Collinwood High School because I'm sick of what they've done there, quite frankly.
Thank you. Absolutely, you know, we're ready for the fight. We're ready for the fight to keep Collinwood right here in our neighborhood. A very beautiful building, a historic building, a very prominent quarter in our community. No way that that school should be in the condition that it is in. I'm also a graduate of that school. No way that that school should sit there with the capacity that it has, fully have less than 200 kids that's in that school, right? No way. But we have large-scale shop rooms. We have large-scale automotive areas in that building, right? It is excellent for an east side trade school, right? You know, we have this long waiting list at Max Hayes on the west side. Our kids have to travel far, far away, over two or three buses to get there. But we have the facility right in our neighborhood that we can house these young people. We can provide the resource, we can have the training, we can have the classes, right? But it's going to take us together, not just elected officials, but you in this room to demand that, to work with us, to push the school district. We got a board member back here who's from Collinwood. She's sitting right in the back with the red shirt on. We need to see people like her from Collinwood to say, don't vote for whatever comes before you to close Collinwood. We need to stand together, united, to support, to make sure Collinwood and other schools in our neighborhood stays open. Thank you.
What's known for an east side market? Not much to offer compared to the west side market.
East side market is not in my neighborhood. Have not been inside the east side market in quite some time. But I do see signs for new management. I hear that things are on the up and up with the market and bringing in some new management there to help operate the facility a little bit better than maybe what has been done in the past. And so I'm hopeful that, you know, they will be able to get the business together that ultimately will support the neighborhood, which is what the intention was initially when the market opened, to provide high-quality service and food options to the neighborhood.
I would pass the east side market this morning as it was going down to 91st Street. I'm totally disappointed. There was a victim of mismanagement and theft. Let's be very blunt about it. A victim of mismanagement and theft. It's part of the food desert problems that we're experiencing. We all had great ideas and thoughts about the east side market when it opened. It was working well. And then we know what happened. People took advantage of it. And they're struggling. And as my colleague indicated, I think they're trying to get it together. But they got a long road to go, a long road. But again, that's why the east side market's in the condition that it's in. It wasn't the community, it was bad management and theft. That's what took place.
Thank you. So how do you plan to work with the housing court on landlords and absent owners?
Okay, as most people know, I'm aggressive, very aggressive on absentee landlords. My diplomacy's gone with them, my political practice is gone. You own a property in Ward 8, you better maintain it. And so I go after all of them. I appear in court if I have to, I write letters into whatever I need to write. And we look at the new community, the expanded ward. We have to have an aggressive policy. You don't have to go too far to see what's happening in other neighborhoods. If we do not have an aggressive building and housing department, law department, we're going to continue to have abandoned homes. We're going to have spectators coming in here grabbing what they can. We need, so it's all hands on deck. It's going to be the administration working with council and working with the county on these foreclosed homes, these abandoned foreclosures. They're sitting all over the place and nothing happens. They just sit there and rot. There's got to be a better policy and I'm committed to that. I've been doing as best as I can.
Thank you. So I think before we answer that question, we have to understand how things get to the housing court. You know, cases don't just appear in housing court, right? It starts with building a house. Well, it starts with a complaint. Complaint is then triggers the building and housing to come out, investigate the complaint, then the complaint, whether it is valid or whether they believe it warrants prosecution, then they refer that case to the housing court. That's the process. It ain't City Council saying, hey, judge, put this house before you and go after the landlord. That's not how it happens. No matter what anybody tells you, that's not the process. And so once a property gets to housing court, I think it's important that City Council members be engaged with the housing court staff, not only when things are bad, but also when things are good, right? When we see property owners who may be involved in housing court, who are doing good things, right? Just engaging with the housing court to ensure that they hear our voice, they hear our residents' voice, right? To get testimonial statements about, you know, the condition of the properties. And also, I think one of the great things that we've been able to do with City Council and the court has been, you know, the housing resource clinics. You know, hosting more of these housing resource fairs and clinics around our community so that residents can know what's available, landlords can know what support is there for them.
Okay, so our next question is from Waterloo Arts Council. Do you support increase? Do you support increasing the engineering and planning department budget to include new hires who will be dedicated to improving our streets?
Of course. We, you know, that is a very critical division and department within the city of Cleveland, especially with the alarming rates of pedestrian fatalities and the accidents that we are seeing at very high levels along some of our major corridors, are high-volume intersections across the city. Fully supportive of ensuring or lobbying supporting that they get more staff. I think also we need to add more staff to those who are helping to actually implement the work that those designers and those other engineers are doing, right? You know, we oftentimes go out and we fund other entities to come and help do the work. But I think that we should have in-house staff who can go out, not just our street staff who does amazing work and lay asphalt and fix concrete for us. But staff who has a little bit more of a specialty, right? In the work that they can do and provide for us in our neighborhoods.
Thank you. It's just not about engineering or city planning. We need more health inspectors. We need more inspectors in building and housing. We need more planning executives. So as we go into this budget round, those are going to be the issues I'm going to be looking at and asking questions about. What are we doing to ramp up? It shouldn't take eight months to open our candy store up on Waterloo Road. That's ridiculous what we experienced there. Until I sent an email to the mayor saying, look what we're having here. We got to look at every department, every division that interact with our residents and our local businesses, where we can improve things, where we can speed up the process. It's unacceptable how long it takes to get things done. And again, whether it be traffic, whether it be planning. But again, I'm committed to that and I believe that the majority of council members are as well.
Thank you. Do you plan to invest dollars in a community south of the I-90 Bridge? Yeah, this one doesn't.
I don't, can you, what's that? I don't understand the question.
It just said, do you plan to invest dollars in a community south of the I-90 Bridge?
South of the I-90 Bridge?
So the current Ward 8.
Of course, why wouldn't we? We have to invest it throughout the entire neighborhood. No neighborhood should be left out. So I concentrated in the areas that I represent, I've concentrated on those areas with the expanded ward, whether it be Euclid Avenue, whether it be expanded sections of St. Clair Avenue. We've got to have a holistic approach, especially with our development corporation refunding that group, getting the city to understand the importance of our areas. I'm committed to that. I feel very strongly about the Euclid Green neighborhood of Nottingham. I grew up in Nottingham as a kid. I'm committed to doing whatever I have to do to improve the entire neighborhood, a united community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, I represent the south area of the ward. And I can tell you that there's not one single part of our neighborhood that we don't have something happening, whether it is the St. Clair Superior, with the work that we're seeing happen there, the new homes that have been built there. In addition to the 16 new homes we're building that's going to house men coming from prison to reunite them with their families and their children. Whether it is new housing that's coming in the 72nd corridor area, what is Glenville, where we are working to bring the YMCA back to Glenville. We've been steadfast working with the YMCA to make that happen. Whether it is Euclid Park, where we have an upcoming, almost a million dollar TOCI grant that we're going to be deploying to enhance the appearance of Euclid Avenue. Whether it is continue to invest in our housing stock with the $100 million program that I mentioned earlier as relates to building new homes, rehab and vacant homes in Nottingham Villages, and also in parts of Collinwood as well. And so we are absolutely investing now and continue to make investments as we move to the future. And we are committed to investing in the northern part of Collinwood as well. Don't be misled, don't be fooled that I'm only going to focus on one part of the ward, because that's not the case.
Thank you. Here we go. How will you all support existing and new small businesses as the councilperson?
So for the last two years, City Council have received, what do we get? $600,000 in net funds? $600,000 in net funds through our budget allocations and the negotiations between council and administration. Each year that we receive those dollars, many of those dollars have went back to support small businesses. But I can tell you, this allocation, $400,000 of the $600,000 is going straight to small businesses in our neighborhood. Supporting whether it's storefront renovation, whether it's operational support, whether it's helping them to take a gravel parking lot and actually make it safe for people to park on, whether it's to help to fix that door that's falling off in front of their building or the broken window there, or provide additional safety for those who are patronizing their business. So $400,000 of the $600,000 this year alone is going to support small businesses in our neighborhoods.
I'm doing that right now and I appreciate all my colleagues who are doing the same thing. Small businesses are what our neighbors are based off of. And I look at whether it be Waterloo, East 185th Street, 200th Street, St. Clair. Those small businesses is what's make up our community because the large businesses for the most part are gone. So I've been committed to that. I've been working on a storefront program. I'm very proud of all the businesses that have gone through the storefront program and I've contributed money to and funds to. So again, I'm committed to that because that's what makes a neighborhood. When you look at Waterloo, a good example, it's an area that was a gritty area for a long period of time. Look at the vitality in it now. a long period of time, look at the vitality in it now, look at the vitality of 185th. It's through these various programs that I have funded and I'm going to continue to do that and I want to expand it. I want to expand it to the new sections of Ward 10, whether it be along Euclid Avenue, whether it be St. Clair Avenue, I'm committed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do just want to, that was our last question, so no more torture for me. So, oh, thank you. So now we're going to move into their closing statements and they each get two minutes, we're going to go in reverse order. So Congressman, you go first.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an important election come November 4th. I'm committed, I've been a full-time councilman, my record in public office speaks for itself. I put my attendance record, my legislative record and my voting record against anyone who's ever served. You've never heard any criticism on my records in public office because I'm committed. I do it every day, I believe in this neighborhood, I love this neighborhood and I love being a councilman. I represent it to the best of my ability. If elected on November 4th, I will continue the same dedication and service to proven results that I've demonstrated over all these years for the greater new Ward 10. We have a great community here. I would encourage all of you to become more engaged than ever before. Join a neighborhood group, existing group, start a block club, get involved. Again, we need to get the Nottingham Civic Club back up and going, we need to get the Euclid Park Civic Club back up and going. I'm committed to that. This is a great neighborhood, I want to represent this area, my history is here, this is where I raised my kids. And again, look at what I've done, the proof is in the pudding. I've tried to do the very best job I can and it is about the neighborhood, it's never been about me, I've never run for anything else. I'm committed to this neighborhood and God willing, come January 1st, if I'm a councilman, you will have someone who will take care of your phone calls, respond to your emails and do the best job I can. Can I cure our everything? Can I respond to everything? No, I can't. But I believe that I've tried to do my very best in my time in public office, that's all I can tell you. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you. Again, thank you to the League Women Voters Cleveland Chapter for bringing us here today again, thank you to the Cleveland Public Library for opening their doors for us. Again, I've had honor of serving as Cleveland City Council, also the Cleveland City Council representing the 10th Ward and everything we have done has been because of the foundation, built on the foundation of the people that we serve. And as we move into the next phase of our community, you know, now being able to unite all of Collinwood, majority of Collinwood together, that we come together with a shared purpose, a shared purpose to bring us, our communities together, not continue to be divided by a highway, but really work together to address the issues that we have in our neighborhood, you know, promote the good things that are going on in our neighborhood because our tongues are very powerful, right? As a leader, as a resident, it is important for us not to just go out in bad mouth and bash our community about the bad things that are happening, but it's important that we talk about the good things that are happening in our neighborhood because that's what's going to get folks here in our community. That's what's going to make the folks from the west side move to the east side when they hear those things. And so I look forward to the November 4th election, you know, I ask for your support. You know, we are doing a lot of great things, working with administration across the city and we want to bring a lot of those good things to our neighborhood, things in addition to what we've discussed here today. How can we take the seat that I have at many of these tables across the city and bring those ideas and bring those thoughts to our neighborhood? What I can tell you is that I'm a hard worker, this is personal for me. Me and my wife, again, like I said, we're raising our two boys here, so it's personal. So I want this neighborhood to be the best that it can be, at the greatest level it can be, reach the potential that I know that we have and that's going to take a councilperson who is going to have the drive, the vibrancy to get it done. No matter if you've been in office 50 years or seven years, that's not going to determine how fast your grass is going to get cut, your pothole is going to get fixed, or the houses will get tore out. It's about our future. It's about, do we only care about now or the next four years? Or do we care about the next 10 to 15 years down the road? So I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one could think on behalf of the League Women Voters to Greater Cleveland Chapter, thank you guys for all joining us tonight. Thank you both councilmen for joining us here tonight and everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you.